We'll call to order the August fifteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of the Planning Commission. I'll ask the clerk to do roll.
Anderson?
Here.
Patrick?
Here.
Broker?
Here.
Clerk is not here.
Scott?
Here.
Lachey?
Present.
And me.
Here. And Joe does have an excused of absence. Everyone has the agenda, which just has our one item this evening. Is there anything else regarding the agenda and changes? If not, do we have approval?
So moved.
So all those in favor?
Actually, you got it? All right.
Yes.
Yes.
In our packet was the minutes from the July eighteen, twenty twenty four meeting. Everyone have an opportunity to review those? And if so, any comments on them? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from July eighteen, twenty twenty four?
I moved to approve the minutes from the July eighteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, minutes are approved, which moves us down to public comment on agenda items. There will be two public comment sections this evening. You have the public comment here, which means that you can talk about the agenda item, which is the public hearing. And then during the public hearing, we have public comments where you can make comments related to the ordinance change regarding the zoning for the short term rental, but you're welcome. You can say you can speak at both or individual, depends on where you'd like to have it recorded. So if anyone would like to speak in regards to the agenda items, feel free to come up.
Ethan Barty, five eighty-four Lake Street, property owner in Sagatuck in the township. I've spoken many times. We also, I'm in real estate, also manage quaint cottages, represent forty homeowners and property owners in Sagatuck. We, we happen to personally own the Bird Center Resort. Bird Center Resort's been around for a hundred years, you know, cottages, by-pipe cottages all along. Sagatuck has always been a tourist community. People coming from Chicago, St. Louis, Indianapolis, all over. They come up, you know, purchase properties up on the hill. Winter comes, they close them down, just like they did on the lake, and they go home. Back then, we had the Pie Factory. We had Hayworth. We had a lot of different, different things. Over the past twenty-five years, all we have is tourism. The town has never had as many businesses, as many restaurants, and been as thriving as much as it has now. I remember Felicia Fairchild, we were begging people to come into town. We have that now, and now we're turning tourists away. It is a mistake. It is a mistake to put caps on anybody's property. It devalues the property immediately. We've already seen it in the real estate. There are real numbers, and you're probably going to see some of those real numbers in actions. I don't know. If I were going to sell my property now, I definitely would file a lawsuit. It is an immediate impact on the sale of properties. It's going to be a slow impact on the businesses. As a property manager, you know, I welcome the changes of the rules. And, you know, and they've done a great job. The task force did a great job. They did a great job until they implemented the caps. The caps, again, will take care of themselves. Let free enterprise happen. You can't sell a house on the hill for eight hundred thousand dollars, and it makes sense for an investor. It just doesn't happen. But it does make sense for a family to offset some of their costs and live here part-time, and then when they're not here, allow people to stay in their home and spend money in the community. It's a mistake. It is a big mistake for the town. Why not get an economic study? What is the rush? I know the rush. The rush is personal agendas. Personal agendas. There are certain people that don't want it. There's, you know, everybody knows who the personal agendas are. They don't even listen to public comment. They go straight to the motion and read verb, word for word. Not everyone on the board, but a majority of the board, I believe, has a personal agenda. I just, I believe that the caps are, you know, put the rules in place. We manage forty properties. I go down to the city. What are the number one rules of the city? What are we being broken? They can't give me an answer. We've had zero complaints this summer. The summer's almost over. So let's address the issues and not punish the town. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Again, the short-term rental conversation about that can be done in both times, but that's probably more related to the actual public hearing. But as opposed to, do you have a comment about it being an agenda item?
Yeah.
Right now, the, the public comments we're doing is on agenda items. The item on the agenda is for us to have a meeting with a public hearing. And so if people had an issue about having the public hearing, then they would have the comment. Then we'll have public comment regarding the actual ordinance changes, the zoning changes will be part of the public hearing. So there will be a second, second comment section here, just as soon as we finish this public comment section on the agenda item. I don't know if they can make something. Again, they can, they can talk both times. It's just.
Right. So somebody could choose to talk during public comment and during the, the public hearing. With tonight's agenda, you only have one agenda item, so it's a little different. But, you know, sometimes we have, for example, a site plan that might be on new business, and that's not something that normally has a public hearing component where there's, there's separate comments for that. But somebody could choose to speak about that during a public comment period. So if folks are here because they want to speak, you know, specifically to the zoning ordinance amendment, there will be an opportunity during that public hearing, which is going to be essentially the next agenda item to officially speak to that, that particular topic during that period of time.
And it's also for a public hearing. If you're making the comments, it will be recorded as part of a comment during the public hearing, as opposed to being a comment to the agenda item. So it's probably if you wanted your message and your comments recorded as part of the public hearing, I would encourage it to be done, you know, during that. But you can, again, you, we can't, we can't dictate, as long as it's related to an agenda item, which is the public hearing. It's kind of confusing. Jake, do you have anything else you want to add?
I don't know that I have anything to add to it. I mean, essentially, because a, a, a public hearing is a statutory requirement, and as part of that statutory requirement, there's a public comment period in the public hearing. So there's kind of two identical public hearing sections, a lot of overlap there. If you want to comment on the amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is probably why most of the people are here today, it, it would likely make sense to make those comments during the public hearing.
You can.
You can certainly do both.
Absolutely. Oh, you definitely can do both. Is there any one else in the room that would like to speak before we open up the public comment or before we open up the public hearing?
Hi, my name's Kathleen Quick. I just purchased a property on the hill. I just want to say a few things about the agenda item. Thank you for having this as an agenda item. I, I appreciate the opportunity to hear the board talk about the topic and learn more about it. I am frightened a little bit by the topic on the agenda, because when I purchased my property last year, it wasn't on, on the agenda as to have caps. There was discussions about enforcement, which I found exciting and good. And so the cap part of this was really a revelation for me over the last few months. So thank you for your work on the board. I look forward to the next part of the meeting, but I appreciate all the work you've done.
Can we get your address? It's a typical thing. We ask for a name and address, please.
Three one two Hoffman Street.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Old house with the black iron fence that still needs teals.
Thank you. Welcome to town. Welcome. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? If seeing none, we will close the public comment on the agenda item. We have no old business, which moves us to the new business, which is the zoning ordinance amendment for the public hearing. So we will call to order the public hearing for the zoning ordinance to impose the maximum limit on the number of short-term rental license in a specific zoning district, establish the effect of such limits on existing license, and establish how available license will be issued, and provide a mechanism for city council to adjust such maximum limits to protect the health, public health, safety, and welfare. At this time, I will ask the city manager and still our zoning administrator for a few more meetings, if you'll give a summary, which was included in our packets, but just to kind of walk us through how we got here and where we are.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. So, you know, backing up to February of, of last year, twenty twenty-three, in that, that timeframe, there was a, you know, recommendation from you as a planning commission to the city council to evaluate establishing a short-term rental task force. The city council concurred and, and did in fact create a, a short-term rental task force made up of a diverse group of individuals from different perspectives on short-term rentals to kind of meet and study the issue at length. They did that work by meeting twice a month over a period of several months. They did a lot of public engagement as related to surveys and town halls and taking comments during public meetings. And then working with a, a consulting, planning consulting firm to kind of dive into the details and ultimately come up with a short-term rental task force report that had a variety of recommendations. So some of those recommendations related to enforcement and transitioning to a short-term rental licensing system that involved annual inspections. And so all of those related items have been handled through ordinance updates through both your zoning and then separate police power ordinances back in February of this year. So that work took about, about a year. One of the pieces of the short-term rental task force that was unclear in their recommendations was whether or not they were recommending a, a cap. So essentially, they met, they discussed it, they debated the issue for maybe, for lack of a better term, and, and ultimately did not make a recommendation either way on caps, but indicated that they felt that the issue really should be studied further by the, by the planning commission. So you did some of that work and gathering further data. You ultimately made a recommendation to the city council indicating that they should, you know, consider, you know, providing some direction to move forward with actually implementing caps in the city's R1 residential districts. So this would not be citywide. The, the city's commercial zoning districts wouldn't be subject to a short-term rental cap. The cities, our two residential districts wouldn't be impacted by this cap, but this would, would just apply to R1 residential zoning districts. So a copy of that motion that, that you previously passed on a four-three basis is, is included in your, your meeting packet. Staff reviewed that recommendation with the city council, and they ultimately passed a, a, a motion in the directing staff to prepare a, a police powers ordinance and, and draft zoning text, as well as a policy to implement caps at a level approximately equal to twenty percent of the dwelling units in each R1 zoning district. The council asked that the, that the language indicate that the cap would not operate retroactively. An existing short-term rental license would remain valid unless there's a transfer of property or the license is revoked or lapses. Council had an interest in a lottery system once new short-term rental licenses were issued and indicated the planning commission should hold a public hearing on the zoning amendment necessary to implement a cap, but would not assist with the separate police powers related ordinance. So consistent with that direction, staff and, and the city's legal council worked together to, to draft some language that's before you this evening. I'll just kind of walk you through that. Essentially, it would do, you know, what you previously had recommended and, and what the council desired. So the zoning text indicates that a, a cap would be imposed on the city's R1 zoning districts in an amount approximately equal to twenty percent. Our consulting planner looked at some, some data, and you looked at some data, and the council looked at some data and provided kind of what that number of licenses would look at that would be approximately equal to twenty percent. And, and those numbers are included within the zoning ordinance text. One key piece that's not, one key piece that is kind of updated, maybe since the, the council's initial motion was how do we handle accessory dwelling units? The, the text that's before you today would exempt accessory dwelling units from the cap. So that kind of has two impacts and two considerations here. One is that if a, a property owner, you know, owner occupies their home, and they apply to you for special land use approval to separately rent that short-term, or I'm sorry, that accessory dwelling unit, and they meet the special land use and site plan requirements for, for accessory dwelling units to be rented separately, then they would be eligible for a short-term rental certificate. They would be exempt from the, the cap. So we have an owner occupied situation there. The other piece of that would be that if a, you know, property today is, 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 has a short-term rental license, and they either have an accessory dwelling unit or build an accessory dwelling unit, that in the future, they would then be able to also apply for a short-term rental license for that accessory dwelling unit. But the caveat is that our ordinance still requires that accessory dwelling unit and the single-family dwelling be rented together under a single contract. But that extra accessory dwelling unit space would still be allowed to be used for short-term rental purposes. There's a provision next that talks about issuing available licenses and that, you know, if we're at the maximum and we have an opportunity where we're below the maximum limit that's set, that there would be a lottery system. And then there's a provision that states that the, the limit of of short-term rentals can be modified by resolution of the city council. So if future city council desires to change the limits, they could increase them or they could decrease them. The other option would simply be to kind of take out a provision that it would be, you know, could be changed by resolution. It would then need to go through, you know, a typical ordinance amendment process, zoning change, then it's, it's going through your public hearing process and, and, you know, back to the council with the recommendation from, from you, and, and then it's, you know, on the police powers ordinance side, which is separate from this, then it would need to go through that ordinance process. So the other sections are, you know, severability as it relates to if a court finds a piece of this as being an issue or invalid, that they could strike that portion, but it doesn't strike the entire ordinance, that the other portions would still be in effect. That all ordinances or parts ordinances in conflict with this are, will be repealed by this ordinance passing. And then it has the, the effective dates, which aligns with the, the legal requirements to, to do some publications in the newspaper. So maybe a bit of a long summary, but important to cover all those pieces. I'll answer any questions if you have any or.
Just, we got, I got a little bit lost into a little bit of why we say twenty percent and what's written here, but we're saying that's in the police powers, and they could change it there. If we can just hit that summary a little bit better for me.
So the, both the zoning, the zoning text here and the separate police powers ordinance as it's drafted would indicate that this, you know, the council could change these limits via resolution.
Would we then have to change the zones? If they, if city council three years from now makes it twenty-five, whatever, would we have to then go back and change your zoning?
No.
But even though it says twenty?
Correct. So the way the language reads is that it's initially equal to approximately twenty percent.
Okay.
And that these numbers are established on an initial basis, but
Okay.
they could be changed via resolution. You could recommend something different than that.
I understand. I just didn't why, if it says this here, why we have the two separate things. And if one changed, why the other one wouldn't?
Yep, good question. And by the way, I'm just helping folks understand the process, your role, and you certainly know this as planning commissioners, is to review the text tonight and, and conduct your public hearing and take that feedback, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the city council on whether to adopt as is. That the council, you can make a recommendation that the council not adopt this language as is, or you can make a recommendation that they adopt it with some changes. So ultimately, then from there, it's going to go to the city council to then make a determination.
All right. I don't know if this is during our discussion, if I can ask you, just since you're doing the presentation, it kind of relates to what CJ was saying. Could you, could this be written to where instead of having the actual percentage or the maximum numbers that you just refer to the police power so that if in the zoning, if it did change down the road, you wouldn't have something in zoning that would be different than what the police powers may be at a future time?
And then not fully.
We lay out all the initial minimums, but instead of laying them out, could you just make a reference?
They would be laid out the same way in the police power ordinance.
Right. But let's say like CJ was saying, down the road, they decide they want to make a change, whether it's higher, lower, keeping them, removing them. If we don't have to go back and change the zoning, but it would still be in the zoning if somebody was looking at it, how would they know that they're to look at the?
Well, there's also the portion in the zoning ordinance that says it can be adjusted by resolution. So that resolution, I mean, presumably that would be put up, you know, maybe on the city's short-term rental landing page on its website, and it'd be publicly available. So people would know how many licenses there are. And to a further point, there's a policy that we developed that the city council has already looked at. And there is a whole notification process for issuing short-term rental licenses in cap districts when they become available. So that includes publishing notice and then establishing an application window for available licenses and then having a lottery drawing that's done at a, at a public meeting and then issuing licenses.
Right, that's all.
So there's, there's a lot built into the process.
No, I just didn't know if we could have had it to where the, the zoning ordinance just makes reference to whatever the most recent police power is as opposed to having.
The idea with the resolution is to provide an avenue for adjusting the number of licenses in a district without amending an ordinance. And so the, the police power ordinance is going to look similar. Those numbers are there as an initial jumping off point. And then if the council down the road wants to adjust them, for instance, because they're based on a percentage and the number of dwelling units in zoning districts is constantly fluctuating, they can, they can make those adjustments without going through the ordinance amendment process.
Okay. Great. Any other questions for Ryan or Jake before we move on to the public comments?
So I'm curious how the change happened to get accessory dwelling units exempted from the proposed cap.
So as you, I think, heard, you know, during your, your last planning commission meeting, there was some comments made about accessory dwelling units. And there were some others that, that raised that particular question and, and had an interest in that as well. So you know, when we even looked at, you know, providing the, you know, the council with a number of short-term rental licenses there were in particular districts, you know, we were already finding that it was very difficult to discern those numbers without knowing you know, each property that had an accessory dwelling unit and how many parcels had, you know, a single-family dwelling unit on it. So even though a property may have a, a license for a single-family dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit, you still, you know, our, from our staff perspective, wanted to count that as, as one, because it has to be rented together under a single contract. So as we evaluated, you know, how are we going to, I guess, administer this, this going forward? We're trying to keep track of all of that. And then also taking into effect, into account that, you know, if somebody's, you know, owner occupying the home and, and goes through a special, you know, land use process to separately rent their, you know, accessory dwelling unit, and they're on the property, you know, is there, is that going to be bothersome or concerning if they have a short-term rental license for that accessory, you know, dwelling unit? Does that kind of adverse to the reasons why the cap's being put into place? So that was one factor that's, you know, staff evaluated and, and making a recommendation for this to be considered. The other piece that we thought about as it related to, you know, if it's not owner occupied and it's somebody that already has, you know, that license and they, they want to add on the accessory dwelling unit and rent everything under a single contract, was that is adding the accessory dwelling unit space, even, you know, with it being run under a single contract, any different than if you were to add an addition on your home and, and adding space that way? And that, you know, if you have a license, you could still add space and add occupants by doing that. And was there much of a difference there? So you have the administrative piece and just trying to count the numbers of at least properties that have at least one short-term rental license. That's much simpler than trying to take into account all the accessory dwelling unit situations, and then those other two factors as it relates to getting owner occupied or adding additional space and, and is that much different than the ADU respect? Maybe I didn't explain that.
It did. Is this a time for us to discuss or to?
I think that's, you know.
Okay.
So that's what I was going to say.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for, one more question, if I may. This may be for the attorney or for, for Ryan. What we're looking at tonight is an amendment. Wait a minute. We're looking at what we passed, what the council passed, the police powers and the, and the, that is chapter ninety-nine point five of the, of our ordinances. That's a completely new ordinance, correct? It is not part of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
Okay. What we're looking at tonight because of the way it's written, it's section one subsection V. Are we looking to replace subsection V of the existing zoning ordinance? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, but the copy that you have might have more detail than the current copy. So when that police powers ordinance was adopted the first time around, a, a lot of the regulations that were previously in the zoning ordinance were kind of migrated and replaced by the new regulations in the police power ordinance. If you look at the amendment that is in front of you tonight, is the current section we're talking about, let's see here, section one five four oh two two V. Right now, as that looks in the zoning ordinance, it is, it just has subsection one and subsection two.
Okay.
So the amendment that's in front of you adds subsection three and everything under that. That's the change that's being affected.
Great, thank you, because it's impossible to find a copy of the current zoning ordinance, as I understand it, because it only gets published once a year and it hasn't.
Yeah, I, I do.
I wasn't able to get the police powers on our website, but okay. So what, so what? Okay, I was just trying to see where this fits in our zoning ordinance. And what you're saying is under subsection V, one and two are, are already there. And then subsection three, maximum loads on short-term rental licenses, et cetera, is the new, is, is what would be newly added to our zoning ordinance.
Yes, that's accurate.
Thank you. Just trying to see where everything fits. Thank you.
Hey, with that, we will open up the public comment section regarding tonight's hearing. If you are in the room, you will be asked to come up and to the podium, state your name, your address, limit your comments to three minutes. If you're online, please raise your hand. And if we have numerous, we'll try to go back and forth. I mean, they always say in a public hearing, they'd listen to the comments in favor, followed by ones who are opposed, but we don't know, you know, who has on each side. So we'll just kind of take them as you guys want to come up.
Hi, Seth Arthur, an attorney of Varnum in Grand Rapids, and I represent the Sagatuck Neighbors, a nonprofit organization of people that own and manage short-term rentals in the city. A few things need to be addressed before the short-term rental ordinance is recommended to city council. First, we've raised previously and we still preserve our arguments that conflicts of interest remain on the council, including members potentially receiving a financial gain or benefit by owning a home in the exempt R2 district, and upon information and belief, seeking to sell that home, which has now increased in value due to the restrictions on R1. So we believe that the previous vote by the council to install caps on short-term rentals is invalid, and at a minimum, there should be a revote. Second, the planning commission should not allow the city council to alter the percentage of the cap by a resolution. Zoning ordinances need to be adopted pursuant to the zoning enabling act, which makes it possible for any zoning ordinance to be subject to a referendum. Here, the proposed ordinance states, quote, "To provide the city with the flexibility to adjust the maximum limit of licenses, city council may by resolution, review and amend the maximum limit." The city is taking away the referendum process and the public's ability to object to any future cap number installed by the council. The city cannot do that, and it shouldn't do that. A process compliant with the zoning enabling act should be used for any amendment so that the public can object to such an amendment. Third, the planning commission needs to spend more time on this proposed ordinance before recommending it. We've mentioned before that treating R1 residents and R2 residents differently has equal protection clause violation concerns. What's the rational basis to do this? The proposed ordinance's justification for capping is because R1 zoning districts are intended to promote and preserve single-family residential uses. However, R2's objective is also, quote, "To enhance low-density, single-family land use." Section one five four oh three oh of the zoning ordinance. So why is there not capping in R2? Why is the treatment different? Again, this raises equal protection concerns under the law. So we think there are remaining issues that need to be addressed before this proposed ordinance is recommended to the city council, including conflicts of interests, altering future cap numbers by resolution, and equal protection considerations. Thanks.
Thank you. Next. Next.
Uh, hello, my name is, uh, Michael Sanders from two ninety-seven Sugar Hill Court, and I just want to take a moment to echo some of the thoughts I shared back in July regarding the proposed twenty percent cap on short-term licenses. Um, I do applaud the city's efforts to find a reasonable balance in regulating short-term rentals. That is, it's essential to support our vibrant tourist economy while also ensuring that Sagatuck remains livable for those of us who call it home. Uh, after all, it is the full-time residents who contribute to the heart and soul of this community, making Sagatuck the special place that it is. However, I believe the current approach with a blanket twenty percent cap is too broad and lacks the necessary nuance. Uh, my concern is that why, while well-intentioned, the regulation might inadvertently harm local families like mine that it aims to protect. Uh, my family has chosen to make Sagatuck our forever home because it's an excellent, uh, of its excellent schools and our connection to this beautiful small town. We got married here at the Wickwood and we're looking forward to deepening our roots here. Uh, we've all experienced some of the downsides of short-term rentals, uh, issues that can arise from poorly behaved guests, uh, and also the displacement of residents. Uh, therefore, and it sounds like you guys have already considered this, so thank you. Uh, I, you know, I propose an exemption for and support an exemption for accessory dwelling units, uh, specifically for owner-occupied properties. Um, you know, these owner-occupied ADUs do not displace residents. In fact, they help them continue living in Sagatuck. Uh, with onsite owners, we can quickly address noise and nuisance issues that may arise from guests. And we are also most likely, uh, or more likely to maintain our properties to a very high standard. Uh, common sense provision may simply be to allow short-term rentals whenever the owner lives onsite. Uh, and another point, a rigid twenty percent cap on STR licenses, uh, creates a situation where a resident who does not currently hold a license will basically never have the opportunity to acquire one, uh, because many districts already exceed the twenty percent cap. Um, so by considering the nuances, nuances of full-time owner-occupied residences, especially with ADUs, uh, we can ensure that families like mine have a chance to remain in this lovely town without being unfairly impacted by regulations that do not take our circumstances into account. I know you've considered them again. Thank you. Um, so I just urge you to make sure the exemption for ADUs for owner-occupied properties ends up in the ordinance, um, so that we can make Sagatuck, uh, a place for both residents and tourists to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one. Anyone else in the room?
Hi, Richard Williams, ten fifty, ten fifty-two Elizabeth Street. Uh, you know, the American dream, I thought, was, you know, you have a home and maybe you save up and you get a second home. And then you get that second home and you rent it out sometimes to pay some of the expenses. And especially here in Sagatuck, pay, cover the high property taxes. But with this cap, this of twenty percent, you're killing the American dream for many people who had that dream to do that sometimes. So they're not coming here to R one. It's not going to happen for them. Those people who won't be coming, they won't be renting out and they won't be here. But if they were able to, you know, they rent it out, cover the cost, make their home look good, because most short-term rental homes in town look better than many other homes. And, um, so that's a big concern of mine. The other current concern is I'm wondering how the motion that was passed by a council member over there, um, now includes an, an exemption for ADUs. Well, what about an exemption for tiny houses? My houses are under seven hundred square feet. They're, were built to be cottages. There are homes for rental. It's been a rental for decades. Is there an exemption for that as well? I'm wondering if you're going to throw in the ADO, ADU exemption. It would be very, uh, wise to do that for these tiny houses in town. Another question is, um, you know, the property rights are being taken away from us, R one people, when we may have a short-term rental certificate now. But if we go to sell, you know, obviously our home will be worthless. There'll be a depreciation. The, the value of the home will not be there because whoever buys my seven hundred, five hundred and eighty square foot home isn't going to be able to rent it. Who's going to buy it? Not, certainly not a family with kids. So you're taking away my property rights and that is wrong. And, and I'm wondering about this, uh, you know, it's great that we have the new Granicus and program with the, the rules about how to operate a short-term rental. And is Granicus live? Is there a one eight hundred number yet? And I was asked about, I asked about the twelve violations last month or so. I wanted to know the character of those. And I was told to fill, uh, fill out a FOIA. Well, I think that's a little ridiculous. It should be published every month. This is the character of the violations, so we know what we're talking about. So at the end of the day, I think a twenty percent cap is unrealistic and it's going to kill the businesses in town. My business in town will drip, drip, drip every year as the twenty percent comes down. Is met. Sales will be less and people will be leaving town. Forests won't be here. The businesses won't be here. The restaurants will be closed. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Ethan Barty, five eighty-four Lake Street. Uh, again, um, I'm not going to repeat myself, but I just want to follow up on what the last gentleman said. Um, I mean, if we're, if we're really trying to solve the issues and the problems, um, why would you have to fill out a FOIA? We've had zero issues. I've came in and asked how many issues and what the major issues were and couldn't get them. I mean, why wouldn't we have a, why wouldn't they be listed on a board? I mean, we should all know about them. Um, there are plenty of property, property managers here too, that have been doing this for a long time and manage their properties very well and very strict. Um, and can be within, to a property within minutes, uh, because we have staff local. So it's really no different if you're using a, a property management company, um, than if you're living onsite. Um, there are, there are people that are operating illegally, um, do not have, uh, real estate licenses, do not have the broker's license, um, and giving, you know, everyone a bad name. But if we really want to solve the issues, I just have the question is why aren't we more transparent? Why don't we have this Granicus up? Why don't we have, um, these things rolling? That should be a number one. Understand what the issues are, how to fix the issues. And then from there, then if we need to look at caps because it's out of control, then that's when we should be talking about that. And then an economic study, I will say again. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room?
My name is Gary Kemp. Uh, I live at ten twenty-two Holland Street. I've stated a number of times my disagreement with caps, especially caps. I want to restate it only in that I know it's too late and the city council's already approved it. So all we're talking about now are details. But, uh, it's going to eat away at this community and it's going to eventually cause it to be like no other community. I mean, it's going to be a, just a community like any other. And it won't have an economy and it won't have, um, increasing real estate values and it won't have all the fun and things that bring people here now. So I just want to pass that along. I still feel that way, even though I know it's too late to do any much about it. I do also want to object to the idea of a lottery. I don't, I don't understand what you're trying to do. You say, I would say you're, you're going to say, well, it's perfectly fair. Uh, yeah, it's perfectly unfair too to everybody. Because, so now you have no basis to even hope you might get a license other than chance. It seems to me that we should look at developing some kind of criteria. Why wouldn't you let people that have been residents here for ten years get a license before somebody who just comes in and buys a property? Why wouldn't the cri, that kind of a criteria be something you could come up with, uh, that would be a lot fairer and be an incentive? And you would at least know where you were in the process. You'd know, okay, I'm next, you know, or I'm third or whatever. Lottery just to me is, is very illogical and I don't understand how you can justify a lottery over some other criteria of long-term residents, um, and that kind of thing. And third, um, I think the, you should be aware that I believe, and I think most of the people in here doing, doing rental businesses and such now would agree that the economy's slowing, travel is slowing. People aren't coming to small towns like they were. People are going to Europe that have money. And yeah, people are coming to the cheaper rental properties and doing that quite dramatically. But you, you've already seen a softening of the market and somehow there is no consideration for that. And all the experts in here that have told you, um, the impact of this have been ignored basically. So I don't, I don't understand that, that part of it either, but I do want you to deal with the fact that things are slowing down and our economy is, is not necessarily for rentals. Uh, and bringing people to this town is not what it was. And, uh, I think, I think that's important. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sarah, if you ever see any hands online, let me know. I haven't seen any yet, so.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Jeremy Conley and my property is at, uh, five thirty South Maple. I don't really have any fancy comments to share tonight, but just wanted to give a quick, um, comment of my thoughts on this. So two, two things I'm very disappointed in. First of all, is the short-term rentals, um, cap ordinance. Then I'm very concerned how it could affect my property values and also the ability to sell in the future. So I'm a small business owner. I'm not a conglomerate. I don't have, you know, a hundred different properties. I have one house, one house only here in Sagatuck. And I'm personally, very, very personally invested in it. I mean, I've literally spent tens of thousands of dollars over the last couple of years in property improvements to local contractors. So feel like I've really helped to, um, uh, really helped contribute to the local economy, both in terms of local bus, other local businesses and also with the short-term rentals here in Sagatuck and creating a good environment. I mean, don't allow parties or any kind of craziness at the house. You know, haven't had a single complaint in the last three years, so believe I'm doing the right thing and I believe I'm being penalized for this and I don't appreciate that. I'm very disappointed. Second bit of disappointment is, and everybody here in the room can laugh at me if, if you want, but I don't like the way it was communicated. I live, I actually physically live just down the road in Ha, near Holland. And I didn't know about a lot of this, what was going on until just a few weeks ago. Because even though you guys have my address on file with the, with the license I have, I wasn't contacted either of my physical address or my rental property. So I didn't, I feel like I was not given the opportunity to share my opinions when this was being decided. I'm very disappointed in that because I don't read the paper. I mean, I don't get a copy of the paper. And I mean, I work all the time. I physically, you know, and on the floor, you know, scrubbing floors at the rental property, doing painting, stuff like that. So just disappointed in the whole, in the way this was handled. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Tammy Kerr. I live at three one nine one Beach Trail Drive. I own several properties in the town. I came here twenty-five years ago. I was born and raised here. I worked downtown in the eighties. I've seen the town grow. I've seen it change and it's wonderful the way it is today. It's the best it's ever been. I'm super, super sad and that's, this is even coming to this. I think twenty percent is way too low. I think that the numbers will work themselves out. I think our COVID boom kind of went a little crazy. But I can tell you, being the face of every person that comes into this community as a real estate agent, I, and like Laura and everyone else, we are selling these homes. We are selling homes on the hill. And I can tell you, in twenty-four years, I'm not selling homes on the hill to families. They don't fit in those houses. They want property. They want a community. They want the ravines. They want sandcastle. They want out of the city. It's too expensive. The taxes are too high. There's no room to grow. My kid's dad lived down here and my kids came down here and rode their bikes all over town and got in all kinds of trouble forever. But I can tell you, they had five other families down here that had kids. So it's never been a kid, family, city. So I don't know what you think you're going to get. You're just going to get empty houses. You're going to get devalued houses. You're going to get people that can't sell. But you're never going to get families moving down here. I'm selling houses all the time in the other communities, not here. My kids have now just moved home. They're twenty-nine. They're thirty. They want to build a house. They are not going to come downtown Sagatuck. They don't want to lose their property rights. They think you guys are careless. You're reckless. You're not thinking clearly. No one has gotten notified. None of my people that I rent to, which we manage forty-some, none of them have been noticed that this is happening. Other than us telling them, they wouldn't know. They're not getting an email. They're not getting a letter. You obviously know how to get ahold of them. You send them a tax bill every year, but you can't send them a notice saying, hey, you're going to lose your property rights. It's wrong. It's sad. I'm disappointed that I'm even part of this, that I live in this community. My kids are going to build in Douglas. They're picking out lots over there because their property rights are protected. That's a shame. It saddens me. It's like this is going to stop and that community is going to grow. Is that what you want? I don't know. I don't want it. And the whole ADU thing, that's picking and choosing winners and losers. So if I sold a house that has an ADU or has a garage that they could be converted to an ADU, they get to have a license? And not be counted as twenty percent? That's not fair. Oh, because I didn't pick the right house and I knew you were going to do this? Nobody knew you were going to do this. It was never in the task force plan. They never picked a person from a real estate agent. You didn't pick a real estate agent that is the face of our community, selling every single home in this community. It is very sad how this whole thing went down.
Thank you, Tammy. We'll jump online real quick. We'll take one there. Um, clearly, who was up first? Gary, if you want to unmute.
Gary Medler, four sixty-one Vine Street, Sagatuck. I don't believe the planning commission should recommend approval of the language before you. The planning commission was given this assignment with little to basically no direction at the beginning and has spent an enormous amount of time making its recommendations, uh, to city council. With passage of the police powers ordinance, it's clear that the two don't mesh well. And city council has only recently introduced these new concepts, which seem to conflict with what the planning commission's enormous time spent on this concluded. And I believe the planning commission should set a separate meeting to review the police powers ordinance city council has proposed and what the planning commission has proposed to see what inconsistencies. Chairman Mann made a great point. If city council by a resolution can change the percentage on the cap, then why should this language even contain a cap? Because we have an election coming up. If there's a substantial change in council, the cap could be changed immediately. And I believe the planning commission should seek approval for independent outside council because council and the planning commission at this point with their police power ordinance and what you've proposed through all of your work is conflicted and you need independent councils specifically to address the issues raised by council for the neighborhood group. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. We'll do one more online. Who? Is it R Root?
Oh, hi. Yes, uh, Brian Root. I'm at two forty-seven Grand Street. Um, my wife and I recently purchased that property on the hill, November third of two thousand and twenty-three. Um, we are moving, our daughter starts school on Douglas Elementary on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh. Uh, we are, will be full-time residents. Uh, I was disappointed, while I do not disagree at all with the Realtor that just spoke, I was disappointed to hear that, you know, there aren't children or kids moving to the hill. I think we must be one of the only families that have, have done so. Um, I will say, had there been a cap on November second or that time that we were selling, we certainly would have probably taken a close, a closer look. Optionality is very important. As soon as we purchased the property, I've As soon as we purchased the property, I've been to this, this, this building one other time and that was to appeal our property taxes because our property taxes are double what they were in our house in Chicago. So the point about it being unaffordable for, for families is true. We've had to get an STR in order to help pay the property taxes. But my wife and I love this community. That's why we've moved there. That's why we're moving, you know, our daughter here and, and we remain hopeful. But optionality is extremely important. And again, I just wanted to comment that had this cap been in place, this family wouldn't be moving there, I don't think. Thank you.
Thank you. We will jump back into anyone in the room. I think Laura, you are coming up.
Hello, I'm 747 Water Street. I wasn't going to talk today because everybody knows how I feel. It's obviously reckless to get to this point without knowing what will it do with an economic study. I, I can't understand. But the real reason why I'm speaking is, is the gentleman that spoke up a couple of people back. He's 100% correct. This is like some big secret that you're all keeping and it's wrong. I said in a meeting, when you were going to have these signs made so you can put them in people's yards, like the big ba- big black X, that this owner's going to want 10 more feet added on to their deck or this owner's going to make this change. But the council, I think it was planning, said it's really important to know when there's going to be changes and everybody should know. Okay, well, this is a pretty big change. As a Realtor, you're taking away people's rights. It's a big thing. It's a huge thing. You just heard the gentleman say, I wouldn't have purchased here had we known. So it's a big change. I assumed, silly me, when it was discussed that we were going to have this meeting, I assumed I was going to receive a letter in the mail, like I do when my neighbor wants to add 10 inches or 10 feet to his duck to notify me that this meeting is going to take place. I talked before a group of Realtors and that's when it dawned on me. And I said, the meeting's coming and I never received any notice. So one more time, we're going to sneak around. And if you don't receive an email from the city and sign up, you won't know what's going on today because it's a secret. It's a secret. And I don't understand. I mean, you're all proud of your decisions. You all stand behind your decisions. Then why not make the taxpayers aware that you are taking their rights away? And why not make them aware that when this property owner has a home, they're renting their home, and when that person passes away, that their children will no longer be able to own that home and make it a short-term rental? That's a big sin because people should have had the chance to change ownership on their property to protect their children. We all in the management arena have numerous homes where we manage for the children because they can't afford your taxes. So by being able to rent it, they get to keep the family home, keep the memories alive, stay when they can stay and rent when they can't. You're taking that right away. Why aren't you talking about that? Why aren't you letting people know that you're stripping their rights one by one? You're going to tell me when my neighbor does a 10-inch change on his duck, but you're not going to tell me that you're taking my rights away? It's very sad. It's very sad. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Anyone else in the room?
Hi, I'm Kathleen Quick, 312 Hoffman Street. A little background, we rented in downtown last summer and we fell in love with the town. We've visited three times previously over a decade and just loved being here and spending time. What I heard back then when we purchased is there was no talk of banning or eliminating short-term rentals. But we heard that there was a lot of talk for enforcing mindful guests. You know, people being mindful when you rent. And in fact, the house we rented on Spear Street had a lot of language about how to be a good guest. And I loved it, you know, don't sit out here till midnight talking in the backyard. People are going to work next door. They're not all on vacation. So it was really helpful, I thought. And I am actually thrilled when I walk around town and it's packed. When there's cars lining Hoffman Street and Griffith Street, I'm thrilled. I love seeing everybody here. Side note, I grew up in Queens, so even when it's full here, it seems empty. And last August, we walked past the old house, 312 Hoffman Street, which most of you know was pretty derelict back then, and said, yep, we're going to fix it. We love that corner. But that corner is not a residential corner. Our neighbors are a very large parking lot, whom spotlight faces into our backyard all day. A large front street light and we face a B and B and a church on the other side. So while it's called a residential district, frankly, I feel like I'm in a commercial district. And, and I did that knowingly because, I mean, we didn't really know about the light from the parking lot all night long in the house. But most of the rest of it, you can just see. You know, it's a busy corner. You know, it's a busy street. And I get great joy seeing all the tourists go up and down that staircase because they happily scamper down the staircase. And throughout the afternoon, they very slowly count the steps coming back up, exhausted. But they're thrilled. Most of them walked past the front of our house, saying how much they loved and enjoyed shopping, visiting, dining in Sagatuck. Some of the revelations for us, our tax bill was in extreme shock. I grew up in New York, so I paid New York taxes. And these are like New York taxes. So unfortunately, I had a, a family member pass away. So I'll come back to the tax thing in another meeting. But the new restrictions and revelations about restricting rentals have been a shock. The cost, the actions, the fact that we're in a commercial zone and we don't really feel like we're in a particularly residential zone makes me feel like it doesn't make sense for at least my home in this district, which we later found out is some special district, not really like the town. Apparently the intersection of Griffith and Hoffman is a borderline between a city business district and a residential district. Come spend some time on my front porch. It is very commercial. We need short-term rental to remain in our house. We bought it with the understanding we'd be able to rent the house and/or the garage to help pay what we thought would be somewhat high taxes, but they're kind of crazy high. We'd love to see the language that I'm reading about in the local paper change from things like police powers. Just sounds kind of like a big city who's got a crime issue and limitations towards like encouraging positive guest behaviors. I think people are happy when they're here and I want to be happy as an owner when I'm here. So thank you for your time.
Thanks, Kathleen. Anyone else in the room that wants to comment?
My name is Chris Peterson, 742 Pleasant Street, Sagatuck. And I think you can feel the emotions here from people that it's impacting, but it, not just going to do any good. We all know what you're going to do. You haven't changed your minds a bit. No input, impact study. No support from the task force. The chairman voted against it. Why the rush? Why no notices? Oh, we can't send them out for everybody. Why not? This is our livelihoods. You have a list of every, the short-term rental owners. Did I get notice? I sure didn't. But this kind of seems to be the standard practice lately and it's just wrong.
Anyone else in the room?
I'll make this quick because I know it's my second round, but just.
It's actually only one per, one comment or one comment per public comment section, but. Too bad. Yeah, I'm sorry. Anyone else online? Do you see one online? I don't see one online. I see one more standing in the room. Are you, Mark, you coming up?
Mark Klingle, 747 Water Street. I, you know, there's a lot of things we can say because we've been up here so many times. There are caps. We've been told they're the only solution to, for density. There are other solutions. You just haven't looked at them. This whole thing started with the Baldwins demanding caps two years ago. And then, you know, they basically enlisted their neighbor to push this through. But there are other ways to look at this thing other than caps. There could be distance between rentals. There's other lot solutions. Caps will cause more damage to this town far as property values and you will hurt a lot of individuals in that process. And many people here, you know, even though the age of this, you know, the property owners is quite high, but, you know, I mean, you're, you're looking at situations where people may have to have a change in life or something happens in their life and you're taking away that options for them to save their house. They, they'll have to sell it at a very reduced price. You know, medical issues or otherwise, and you're taking away that option. The, the other concern I have and it's just plain notice. There's no notice to the property owners, especially the, the part-time owners that this is going on and it's going to affect their, themselves and they're unaware of this. Normally, a situation like this, letter should be sent out, some type of notice to, to these property owners that probably live elsewhere most of the time because a large portion of the, the homes here are, a majority of the homes are second homes. The other issue is, you know, that we can't look at something other than caps is this whole thing about the task force. Th- this group recommended a resolution to, to council for a task force. The only thing council told them to do was basically choose residents first. They have a priority. Yet, when the people were picked for the task force, out of the 15 applicants that were residents, we picked three. Out of the nine non-residents, we picked three. So you had a much higher percentage for non-residents on your task force. You picked 20% of the residents and 33% of the non-residents for that task force. Yet that task force, which you chose and you put the resolution, basically were, there was never, the chairman basically never asked for an official vote. She asked for a discussion every time. This discussion was against caps by that task force over and over. And it, it was always said at the very end, well, that's inconclusive. Even though the members clearly stated they were against caps on that task force, the, the information given to this group is the task force was inconclusive. And it was mentioned again tonight. It was far from the truth. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else in the room? Any hands online? Seeing none, we will close the public comment section of the public hearing. At this time, we will move to the commission's deliberation. Who would like?
T. Thompson, comment. I think a motion is in order.
I know. You have some comments on.
Were you going to go ahead and comment? Sure, please.
So there's still, and it's been a long process, but I still really find it hard to find what is the objective? What, what are we trying to do with the creating caps? What, what is the purpose of it? And, and being that I'm on the against cap side, I've, I've moved to some discussion of what that might mean.
I'm happy to offer an answer to that. So the task force did a lot of great work and I would encourage Mr. Klingle to go back and watch the, the last meeting of the task force where we did discuss caps because it was split. That aside, the purpose of caps is to address the density of commercial businesses in our residential neighborhoods. And if you read the zoning for R1 and if you read our master plan and those, you know, are to guide policymaking, they are supposed to be residential. I mean, they're residential. Let me finish, if you will. So the other ordinances, we passed the noise and the, all of that gets at a lot of the nuisance issues. We also passed a lot of changes to better sort of manage and govern short-term rentals. So we got fees that cover, but absence some restriction on the growth and in fact dialing back the, the hard number of short-term rentals. Many of our neighborhoods and especially the hill is unlivable for a lot of the residents. And we look at the survey that we fielded a year ago, July. When you look at full-time residents living in Sagatuck, they want caps. They want their neighborhoods back. So it's, it's really take, it's dialing back the commercial businesses in our neighborhoods to a level where there is room for residents to have quality of life. And many people tonight and other nights or other meetings have said, well, you know, this is taking away my property rights. Well, you talk to people who are, you know, surrounded by short-term rentals and they make the same argument.
So, so just to try to have some conversation on it. So there's not really anything stopping families from buying the homes that become available. How are we going to measure success? I don't know. Density is not, I don't know how to say what that is as a goal. How are we going to measure success in a year or two or 10 from now and whether this was successful? How is city council going to look at it to say, okay, you know what, 20 is too high, 20 is too low. We need to adjust it. We need to remove them. So how are we going to get there? We, I don't feel we're stopping families from moving there currently.
It's, it's not, go ahead. This isn't, I mean, it's about turning down the number of commercial businesses operating in our neighborhood. So you can measure that in hard numbers. Now, as we go through, if, you know, I, I think personally we'll, we'll see the changes that happens. And to me, one-fifth of all of your homes in a residential district being commercial. I mean, actually it feels like a lot, but it's a lot lower than I have to imagine. The hill is close to 40 since, you know, the numbers keep going up. It's certainly, we know it's 38%. I mean, that's insane in a residential neighborhood.
Fundamental issue to me is that you, you call them businesses and I call them a second home. I call it a, a homeowner that's dealing with the taxes and the things. I don't necessarily call it a commercial business and that's where there's room for discussion.
I think, and how I don't want to have to trust it to you because anyone who had voted in favor, whether it's council or on planning previously. I question, I know that kind of relates what CJ said. The homes go up for sale. Any family who wants to buy them has the opportunity to buy them, correct? So why are they not buying them? If they want to live on the hill, if they want to live in that zone and the place comes up for sale, why is a family not buying it?
Well, we've heard from at least one Realtor in town. There has been an issue with people not wanting to buy surrounded by short-term rentals. So we are in this pickle with, you know, we're, we're destroying our neighborhoods. Now maybe, you know, if, you know, future councils or commissions can say, you know what? Screw it. Let's just become, you know, Saga frat house or Saga whatever. And, and fundamentally, please fundamentally change the character of our neighborhoods. Read our master plan. I mean, the introduction to our master plan talks about the small-town rural character of our neighborhoods now. And I mean, that's what a bunch of people came up with to describe what they want this town to be. It's our policy document. It's city council's policy document. So I think we should honor that.
But are they not buying it because, you know, as one of our guests, Richard was speaking to, and I've heard it from numerous people in town, there's a number of homes that are located within some of our R1 zones that probably are too small to really be single-family homes. Single-family homes or to bring children and stuff in. And so again, the question comes up, it's like if a 800 square foot home comes on the market. Is the, who's? Is there going to be a single family buying it at a certain price? Or do we have to drop the price down so low that it makes it attractive for somebody? Who's going to say, oh, now I'll buy it and live in it?
Bobby? As I've said to city council. If you don't like your ordinance, change it. The ordinance is R1. It's residential. It talks about, uh, the quality of the neighborhood. If I had wanted to live in a commercial district, I would have bought a home in the city. I bought a home on the hill. And, um. I am personally surrounded by short-term rentals. And, um. When you consider that almost 40%, and it may be higher now, I don't know. But when you consider that almost 40% of the homes on the hill. Are short-term rentals. Uh, they're commercial properties. I mean. They just are that. Um, and, um, it has significantly affected the quality of life. For me personally and for others, uh, who have talked to me about this. Um, relative to, um, um. What I thought I was going to be able to experience when I purchased the home in 2014. And what I experienced now, including, um. The most recent incident relative to, um, the short-term rental that is behind me. And, um, I don't think that anyone. That, um. I, I respect the fact that all of the agencies have numbers to call, but I think at 4:30 or 5 o'clock in the morning. When, um, I experienced what I recently experienced on the hill. Uh, the only, uh, person or. Company that would answer the phone was the, um. Township, or not the township, but the county police. So, but you know, that's just my personal experience. The fact of the matter is that we have a ordinance. That is residential.
I guess I'm just. To the point because like when we're looking at it. Should we consider? Exceptions for some of the smaller properties because again, if we're talking about trying to bring families in, we're trying to have. Be a livable neighborhood. If you've got something that historically was built as a cottage, has been rented always as a cottage, it's. If it's 600 square feet, 700 square feet, we know that it's not and really was never intended to be a full-time resident. Should they fall within that 20% cap? I, I had, I'd personally have had a hard time trying to think of if I owned one of them, which I don't. And I was trying to sell it. Who's going to be my buyer? And I don't know. It's something that. You know, how does that really differ if I've got a six or 700 square foot home on a lot? From having a 600 square foot ADU? Other than the fact that the ADU has to come before planning. And they have to get the approval to build the ADU, which is a home.
Oh, I was just going to say my understanding from, and, and, and. I just want to say my understanding of the ADU is that city council has not opined on it. Um, and the, is that correct, Ryan? But that you, from a policy perspective, I think the answer is I understood it, that city staff. But I want to make sure. Thinking about this correctly is that there is someone else on site. If you're an ADU. It's somehow materially different because.
That's true.
Because it has to be, the main dwelling unit has to be occupied, but maybe I'm, I know there's been a lot of discussions, so maybe I'm distilling it incorrectly.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, with an ADU, yeah, the, the two options are either you have this. The, a single-family dwelling owner is residing onsite and they have approval to separately rent it. Uh, so they're on site when they're, when it's being rented. As this language is written though, uh, in the case where the single-family dwelling has a short-term rental license. They could also obtain a short-term rental license for an accessory dwelling unit, but everything has to be rented together under a single contract. Now that lane, this language was presented to the, the city council in the form of, uh, the, the police powers or regulatory ordinance. Uh, at their last meeting, uh, we pointed out this language to them. Uh, there weren't any, at least at that point. Uh, request to, to modify that language, uh, but that language is going back to them next week. So they still may make a change.
Okay.
And I, speaking and I, I wasn't at the city council meeting, so this is the first time I've been able to come in. I'm not wild about the ADU exemption. I understand and I appreciate that ADUs have a different character and I think I do. Agree or I, I think there's good evidence, even if only anecdotal that. You know, they're better run, that, you know, the owner is there, um. But it doesn't get at the density issue. And so it's just like. I'm all for AD, giving ADUs more short-term rental licenses when there are short-term rental licenses. Um, that are available. It just, it seems if what we're trying to do is address the density. Just having a big open door doesn't make sense to me.
Yeah. And I can, you know, another, uh, uh, piece to consider is, yeah, I mean, you, you could take that approach as it relates to short-term rentals. There still could be value to the ADU and for a homeowner in that they could, uh, long-term rent it, right?
Right.
They, they could choose to take that approach and still there could be some value there to them and that if you were to make the, you know, recommendation that. It exclude at least the short-term piece. So that's, that's a fair consideration. Maybe just from a, a staff perspective, just a, a few additional things to think of as, as it relates to maybe like smaller units. You know. There could be folks that, you know, have a large home somewhere else and they're ready to downsize and that's the, you know, perfect size for them to. And maybe it's at a more affordable cost because it's, you know, the square footage is simply lesser for them to, to move into, or maybe there's that. Um, you know, uh. Person or a couple or young family that, uh, maybe they're, you know, and that maybe. All that family housing somewhere and they're, they're ready for that, that first home and, and, you know, they can't afford the larger home. Uh, but they still want to live in the city, but you know. That amount of square footage maybe is right for them and, and maybe that gets them that kind of incremental step. So obviously that comes at a cost. Sagatuck is expensive. There's no doubt about that, you know. Uh, there, there, there are certain there, uh, that, you know. Other factors there, but, um, just. At a simpler level, maybe that, that smaller amount of square footage could still have value to, to other parties as well.
I think that's a good point.
What about inheritance rights?
What about lawsuits?
I just wonder inheritance rights, you know, like if someone has had a family home, they pass away, the title's going to their children. It, but it is a new title. So technically if they were keeping the family home because it was a short-term rental. And now it's passing to their children. We don't have currently with the way it's written. They would not be eligible for the short-term license moving forward, which means they may have to sell. That home. I, again, I just want, I'm just naming some of the things that made me vote no before and I'm just trying to understand why we're still not looking at those as options.
Well, I, I, you know, speaking for myself, there, there are all sorts of things about this that are difficult. And there are going to be people who are going to get pinched. Um, and so. I, I want to, you know, uh, watch my language. Um, so. So as policymakers or, you know, um, on council, I think we have to look at what our role is and. While, um. You know, it would be great if we all could have everything we want. I think the greater good is served by. Reducing the number of. To making our neighborhoods livable. And if that means that somebody. You know, dies and their home goes to a child who isn't able to get a short-term rental. I'm sorry about that, but you know, it's, I don't know that the role of city government is to ensure that successive generations. Are able to short-term rent homes. I mean. Life is, you know, we can't. Make decisions so that every contingency gets what they want. And so I think if we look more broadly. And the people who live here full-time, what kind of community do they want? I mean, many of the people who are here talking. Don't live here. Many of the people who are against caps don't live here. And many of them have interests in making money. You know, selling short-term rentals and that's great. That's their job and I'm all for that, but. When we make decisions about our neighborhoods. And our community, I think we have to look for the greater good and my belief and it's my vote. Is the greater good is to preserve a neighborhood feel in our neighborhoods. And if we don't have. The courage to do that, then as Bobby Gunt would say, let's change the darn ordinances and then let's. You know, scrap the master plan and start again.
One other point that as you make that comment. You know, I was looking through our different zones. This will be separate from our public hearing here today. But you know, we do have an R4 zone and the R4 zone is for the purpose of transitional residential zones to create a buffer zone from the high intensity city center commercial zone. To the low intensity commercial residential zone. Item four on that says this zone is not intended to be static, but rather to be adjusted as to develop the needs of the community to evolve. So I'm glad that one of the, I'm just kind of raising the point that we may have to address. Has our R4 ever evolved to be more of a transitional? Area and some of the places on the hill may be more in that arena, but that's a whole separate. Topic for a different, different meeting, different discussion.
I do have another question, Steve. What's the, uh, what's the grandfathered status of pending applications? Is, is there a set date when those, if we have pending applications that those are, uh. Grandfathered forward as long as they get their passage or what, what's there? Is there a date established for that at this point?
The. So as, as the ordinance is written right now, when it becomes effective, so the effective date that's, that's based on when, when council adopts it. And then publication and, and the statutory timelines that follow that. On the effective date of the ordinance, that is when the city would stop accepting new applications for short-term rentals.
So all the pending ones.
So the pending ones would presumably, yes, be processed. And no new applications would be accepted for those districts until licenses become available.
Going back to the inheritance, I know I've heard Holly say that we have to draw the line. Other people's thoughts on. Whether or not that should be a consideration.
I, I guess I, I, I admit I don't know enough about, um. You know. Inheritance laws to know if you really are affected if you put your property into a trust like a lot of people do and their kids, you know. For instance, receive the benefit of the, um, the way they've set it up, the benefit of. The cap we have in the state of Michigan on your property tax increases. I just, I just, I just don't know enough to know if that's really truly an issue. Or if there's a way to work around that through estate planning, to be quite honest. Um, that's my initial reaction to it. And that's exactly what I was thinking about too.
Good question.
So that. Um, that is not necessarily my area of expertise. Uh, I think maybe it's possible if there's a trust setup, but if it's held individually. Uh, under the current ordinance, there wouldn't be any, any, any kind of transfer from one individual to another that's allowed.
Mm-hmm. Even within the same family?
Yes.
So I'm, I'm supportive of doing something for inheritances.
Mark, do you have thoughts on that?
Nope.
Okay.
The, to me, it just seems like a, an estate planning issue is my immediate thought that people. Like our state tax cap, it's a consideration.
If a homeowner then put it into a trust, wouldn't that be then a transfer of title at that point? So then they would lose it themselves and they. So I think that estate planning is a transfer.
I mean, my view is the intent of this is to not allow. Short-term rental licenses to survive. An owner, whether that's through death or sale or. I mean, it's going to be pretty darn hard to lower the number. Of short-term rental licenses if we don't stop transfer of the short-term rental licenses.
That's true. Yeah.
And I understand why that would be distressing to people, but I think it's the right decision.
I agree. I think.
So. If you'd like, I, I mean, the, the police powers ordinance said for short-term rental licenses and, and. May recall that I pointed this section out to you, at least when you were making recommendations to the council that this section was going to be very important, especially if. Caps were later implemented, uh, because the transfer piece is going to be impactful, uh, as it relates to that. So a transfer is defined. Uh, is including, uh, the following, any transfer, sale, change in ownership or other conveyance of a short-term rental license to a person or entity. Other than the owner or license holder. To any transfer, sale, change in ownership or other conveyance of the premises. Three, any transfer, sale, change in ownership or other conveyance of an interest or membership in the corporate entity, which is the owner of the premises. Or the short-term rental license or four, any change in the trustees. Uh, beneficiary or beneficiaries of the trust, which is the owner of the premises or the short-term rental license.
And you're reading from, is that in our ordinance or is that a legal definition? I'm sorry, Ryan.
So that's in the, uh, the police powers ordinance, so they're 99.63. Thank you.
Was there any idea or any support for any other exceptions? That have been discussed here tonight, whether. Be smaller properties. We've already said there's not majority on inheritance. What was the other ones? Any other comments? Deliberations?
Uh, I, I did think there were some other comments that I just wanted to be sure we touched on, um. Uh, the lottery, uh, piece.
Yes.
I didn't, I, and apologies if this was also discussed at the, in, in the context of the police powers ordinance, but. Um, just curious if there was thinking around that, that would be helpful for us to know.
Yeah. So there's a pretty, uh, lengthy draft policy around how the, the lottery would work that was, uh, presented to the city council. Um. As, as Jake alluded to earlier, you know, it involves a, a kind of a publication period in the paper and a period of accepting applications and then a. Uh, public selection process where, you know, uh. Either numbers or folks that were selected are kind of, uh, announced and, and all that occurs very publicly and then. Um, those folks that are, are selected or, you know, then kind of are able to move forward with, uh, submitting all their documents and application fees. And then it would be kind of backup lottery folks that are selected that, you know, any of the, the first few perhaps, you know. Don't meet the requirements or don't complete the process, uh, that then we would go on to an extra set of folks. So, um. Happy to share a copy of that with all of you. I'm sure you're interested in maybe taking a book. It can do that. Yep.
And, and the logic for a lottery over a waiting list. Is that if we did it by opening up a waiting list, like as soon as this passed. What would likely happen is a lot of people who are here now would put their name on it. And so somebody who moved here a year from now or five years from now would really probably. They would have a really tough time having even a shot at a lottery. So it would. Create some fairness for people down the road to have a shot at that. So that's why you would do it that way versus another way.
Okay.
And different communities handle it differently.
Okay. And then my, one other question, I was just curious to be about the, um, the fact that we added. In this round, it looked like a, a num, you know, hard numbers for each. Um, district, R1 district, which obviously is based on the 20% number, but. I was just curious, um, if there's. Um, a mechanism for when there's a land division. Uh, I know that just happened in. Pretty big piece of property on Park Street. Presumably through the Land Division Act and working with the city, they divided into a number of parcel for, is it four, four parcels? So that. Obviously makes the denominator different. Um, just, just wondering how that's going to be handled.
Yeah, I don't know. There's like a specific mechanism for how often, I mean, they would probably be. You know, somewhat up to the council to kind of say, hey, it's been a while since maybe we've evaluated these specific numbers as it relates to. Whatever percentage they're comfortable with and, uh, and would probably have to. Whatever percentage they're comfortable with and, uh, and would probably have to, to ask us to evaluate, you know, how many land divisions have we had? Were we at, at numbers wise and, and, uh, you know, do we, you know, has it changed in such a way that we need to modify the, the numbers themselves?
Is there a way to add to your pro, I, I assume the city gets notified if there's a land division?
Yep. Yep. We have to be involved in that approval process.
I'm wondering if there's a way that you could sort of add to whatever checklist you have on that to let council know so that they know to change the resolution accordingly. Just a thought, that seems like it might make sense, but.
Well, one thing I would add there is that the, the numbers of the caps are calculated by numbers of dwelling units, not necessarily numbers of parcels.
I see.
So there's a little more nuance in just our new parcels being created because, you know, new dwellings could be built, a dwelling could be torn down, a dwelling could be converted into something that's no longer a dwelling. So there's potentially a lot that can go into how those numbers are calculated.
Okay.
Well, I think that you kind of get, it was like the point we were raising earlier though, was like having this specific number in there was like, how often would that be updated? It's updated by a resolution in police power or is it updated in the ordinance? Because I realize that we're doing it on dwellings, but I can use the Park Street as an example, like the three lots that have been created besides the home that's currently there are all. Proposed homes, like they are actually listed, like, you know, the house to be constructed on that parcel. So at some point I'm assuming you will, instead of one, it will become four. If that occurred, based on the 20%, that would raise that one number in that district by one license, you know. But would that automatically occur? Would it have to be based upon what's in? The ordinance, you know, if the ordinance says, you know, peninsula, um, you know, west 10 licenses, does it? Automatically become 11 or does council actually have to make a? Resolution to make it 11, you know, if you had four new parcels or four new dwellings added.
So it, it would be done by a resolution of the council to adjust that. And one of the reasons for that too is bear in mind that we have this policy. That is triggered when there are available licenses and that necessitates a, you know. Notification being published and then that lottery drawing, all of which is kind of administratively burdensome. And so. There is, uh, some of the thought process there is to not have to go through with that, a bunch of successive times for one or two licenses.
None for me.
Deliberation is over.
That's a great promotion, Mr. Chair.
Appears so.
I move to recommend the adoption of the amendments to the zoning ordinance to impose maximum limits on the number of short term rental licenses in specific zoning districts. Establish the effect of such limits on existing licenses, establish how available licenses will be issued. And provide a mechanism for the city council to adjust such maximum limits to protect the public health, safety and welfare of our community.
Second.
We have a motion that has been made and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Anderson?
Yes.
Badger?
No.
Robert?
Yes.
Eric Vaughn?
Yes.
Lachey?
Yes.
In names?
No.
That concludes the commission action. That will conclude the overall public hearing. Which moves us to the communication part. The communication. Each of us had a letter, um, in front of us came from. The planning chair of Holland. And so that was one of the communications that they asked to have that shared. I wasn't aware of any other communication that came in, correct?
Correct. That's only, yeah, formal correspondence that I received related to the, uh. Yeah, the zoning ordinance amendment. As far as for your hearing tonight.
Report of officers, there is none as far as I'm aware. This leads us to the second public comment. Uh, this public comment section, it can be on anything that you would like to address. Once again, we ask that you state your name and your address.
My name is Chris Peterson, seven forty two Pleasant Street, Sagatuck, and I have never witnessed such a smug, self righteous ruling attitude. While you're taking away people's lives, investments, their homes that they plan on passing on to their children. Commission member Gaunt is not surrounded by STRs unless she doesn't want to talk about Barry, Sandy, David, Andrew and Kate and Betty. I live surrounded by STRs and I have not heard anybody talk about how unbelievable and unlivable it is. And if you look at the incidents that were reported, when you were doing your task force, you could see that they weren't there. You've made your decision. I guess we'll, we'll leave it up till November. What I'd like to also talk to you about is the waterfront report. Um, just by the way things are going. I decided to take a look at the ordinance for what you did with the waterfront. And the, uh, public input that you had was wonderful. People loved access to the water, boardwalk views, restaurants. So I was extremely concerned when I found out there's going to be residential allowed on the first floor. Anybody that knows anything about waterfront in a city knows this commercial waterfront is needed to be saved because we don't own the boardwalk. If you put residential on the first floor over the water, they can close the boardwalk because they own it. The second thing is the whole PDU, PUD. A PUD is a multiple unit building, which to me just says condos. And there have been many people in this room over the years that have fought to keep condos off the waterfront. And this opens that up. And I don't even know why it's being, why it was even discussed. There should never be any commercial, there should never be any residential, uh, property on the waterfront, on Water Street. Or we will lose our restaurants that could go in there. I look at the mermaid right now. If I'm reading it right, somebody could come in there right now, put in condos, go up two and a half stories in the front, go all the way to the back. I don't know how tall those would be and that would be able to be passed. People have fought too many years to not have that happen. And I'm, I'm hoping that you'll take action on it, or at least bring it up to the city council for them to take action on. This would change the entire, uh, atmosphere of our waterfront that people come here and love.
Thanks, Chris.
Ethan Barty, five eighty four Lake Street. Um, we've talked a lot about personal agendas and I'm, I'm really disappointed, uh, really disappointed in. Not everyone on the board. There's a lot of people that have been in the community, um, and have talked to people, got their opinions, listened to them. Maybe changed their mind. I know Mr. Mann's at one point voted yes. He talked, thought, voted no. That's someone who's engaging in the community, trying to do what's best for the community. But when you have someone who's sitting there talking about their personal. Opinions and their personal issues for their property only. That's hard to swallow. You should be talking to the town and bringing up other examples of maybe other people that might have issues, not just your own. And there's people that came on this board, came on city council for the sole reason to eliminate STRs. Not listening to the community, not doing what's best for the community, but doing what's best for them personally. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
Russ Gardner, two forty five Spear Street, former planning commissioner, current city council member. Uh, I know most everybody on the board, X, they know everybody on the board. I appreciate the hard work that this decision has brought on to the community. What I want to speak about is this word neighbors. That troubles me. Um, this Saturday at five o'clock is the annual Spear Street Black Party. If you want to come and see what a neighborhood looks like, please come. All are invited. What I would like to point out to you is that there'll be four families there that recently purchased short term rentals and are now full time residents. If you're in a short term rental in my neighborhood on the day of Saturday, you're a neighbor and you're welcome to join us. So the concept of neighbor, I have memories here of being a kid growing up on my street. The bus stop was in front of my house. Neighborhood has changed, but the neighbors are still neighbors. You're here in town because you enjoy my community. I'm here because I enjoy my community. Neighbors are people that are here, whether you're here on a short term basis or whether you're here full time. So when I keep hearing about neighbors and what was the terminology that was used, a frat house? I have never experienced that in my community, ever. That is not Sagatuck. Sagatuck is a community of respectful people who come here and enjoy, and many times they move here. Like the four families that have done so in my neighborhood over the past two years. So I really am concerned with the use of that word neighbor because my concept of neighbor is far different. So if you want to see what a neighborhood looks like, come on down on Saturday at five o'clock, bring a chair, just to pass and experience it. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ.
Hi, got it right this time. Uh, Michael Sanders from, uh, two ninety seven Sugar Hill Court. Again. Uh, I just wanted to add some commentary about the back and forth between, uh, Ryan and Holly. About, you know, owner occupied specifically ADUs and you, you mentioned you could long term rental them. Uh, but I urge you to consider the use case where my family plans on using our ADU for my parents for weeks at a time. And having to tie up that ADU in a long term lease, even if it's only a month or two, which is impossible to find anyhow. Nobody wants to rent the house for like only 60 days or an ADU for only 60 days. Prevents our, my ability to. You know, welcome my elderly parents to stay with us because they can't drive back and forth. It's too dark. It's an hour away, all that stuff. And also I am, and my family is going to be full time residents here in Sagatuck. And we rely on that STR income, uh, to survive here. It's, it's expensive to live here. It's a beautiful place. We want to make it happen. But please consider that residents also need in many cases STR licenses. And, you know, it's frankly terrifying to have to figure out how we're going to pay our property taxes without. That income to help offset some of that cost. Secondly, I, I really don't think owner occupied primary residences with ADUs should ever be described as commercial properties. They're not. I mean, it's my house and I'm just renting out like a small portion of it sometimes to again, help offset. High cost of living and other times share it with my parents and other family members. And also, I mean, the gentleman's not here. Uh, I just wanted to echo his feedback about tiny homes. I mean, there's no realistic use case where a 600 square foot home is ever going to be owner occupied. So it's really wrong to kind of damage his livelihood by eliminating his ability to get STR license. Um, and just in general, regardless of my bias, uh, for owner occupied ADUs and STR licenses. I'm just really struck by the hardship I'm hearing, yes, from some people that don't live here. But also many people like myself and the other gentlemen who recently bought homes here and are just really upset about the prospect of. Figuring out how to live here financially, when, when the, the, the use cases for their residential properties are diminished. Their property rights are constrained. Um, I do understand, you know. The value of keeping neighborhoods a neighborhood. But this really blunt 20% cap, I'm just hearing a lot of hardship just from sitting here and listening to everyone. So. All I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? Gracie? It couldn't be a meeting without you.
Sorry, Boad, uh. Okay, Jane Underwood, one thirty Perryman Street. Now, don't laugh, Steve. I know you're sitting there. Uh, I just want to compliment this group. You've had to listen to a lot of talk. Some of it may be more valuable than others. Um, just some comments. I've been around here longer than anyone here. I've seen Sagatuck change. And it's a great place to live. When I retired from teaching, where am I going to go? Okay, I'm going to go to my cottage. I like it here. I've been active in a lot of organizations. But, you know, I'm hearing a lot of complaints. First of all. People don't seem to understand. Living in a small town. You mentioned a frat house. I had a frat house across the road from me a number of years ago. The language was unbelievable. And hey, I taught inner city high school. I mean, I finally found out who was in charge of that place and we had a little chat. And now I know the owner. And I have a cell number and things are good. I've also seen tiny little cottages. Become huge cottages. Oh my God. You know, I think we need to just learn to get along. We want to see Sagatuck thrive. And I think I've mentioned before here. I know two gentlemen who were looking at a really nice house here in Sagatuck. Bob, you know them too. And when they discovered there were short term rentals on both sides, they said, no way. They bought a house out in the township. So you know what? We do have an election coming up. The League of Women Voters is having a voter forum. Seventeenth of September, Sagatuck High School. Be there. If anyone acts up, I will be there also. And I know how to take care of problems. So I just want to leave a little merriment here. How's my time? Oh, I can say a little bit more. Well, you know what? I'm getting hungry. I think it's time for dinner. Goodbye, folks.
Thanks, Jane.
Bye, Jane.
Any hands online? I don't see any, anyone else in the room. Gary?
There's Gary, count ten twenty two Holland Street. Regarding the, the lottery. I heard Holly say, well, we prefer that the people who come in here new and from out of town have an equal chance to people who've lived here. All their lives who buy up all those licenses. Well, the people who live here and pay taxes here and have done it for years ought to have a chance to buy those licenses. They ought to have a chance to do it first. That's why they bought here and live here. I don't agree at all that people who are just new to coming into the community should have an equal right. That those of us who paid all those taxes and everything else do. Secondly, uh, we bought a couple cottages here that we turned into a home. We put hundreds of thousands of bucks into all the combined real estate, which we have now, which isn't much. We owned a bed and breakfast downtown, which we've improved, which is a, a really stable bed and breakfast, brings people here. I've worked to create a wealth for myself that provides an income for me to live on when I retired. Well, now I can't pass that wealth on to my daughter because I can guarantee you my cottage on the river, which she loves. She would never be able to afford that cottage when she gets the tax bills without having the ability to rent it. And she's not going to live there long term or year round because it's a cottage that isn't even year round livable. It's a cottage that I rent that's right next to the door to my property, but that doesn't matter either. So I think you're, you're really hurting people like myself who've spent our lives here and I've lived here for 25 years. Lived in Holland and came here for 50, 60 years. But that doesn't matter. So we'll, we'll have a nice community here and everybody will be on a random basis and have an equal chance. For a lottery to, uh, get a license. And I just think that's wrong, but I think more importantly, you're discouraging people from doing what I've done. That have put a lot into this community, uh, in terms of dollars and cents, but also my commitment and effort to work, uh, to get things done. On the SCA board, on a variety of other things. So I just want you to know that I'm really disappointed that that doesn't matter.
Thanks, Gary. I do see one hand online. We'll jump over there. Jen, if you'd like to unmute.
Hi, Jen Reese, two four five Spear Street. Um. I wasn't going to talk because the last time I, I spoke, I was, I was trying to counter some of the arguments that were being made. I find it very interesting that nobody for caps has actually spoken this evening. I don't know what that means, but I find it very interesting. Um. I don't know what that means, but I find it very interesting. Um. Holly mentioned this small town rural character in the master plan. I, I think you could slice and dice that definition a couple of ways. Um, I want to tell a little story about density. Something amazing and horrible happened today. We're all aware of the accident that happened today. I personally knew four of those people who were part of the rescue. It wasn't a short term rental person who pulled him out. It wasn't a fisherman from somebody else. Most people knew those people who addressed that accident on a Monday in Sagatuck in summer. I was really saddened to hear some of the personal anecdotes here. And of course, we all have them. We bring them to the table. We're, we have biases. We have stories and influences our decisions. But that is not the job of this commission. We're supposed to be analytical and as Holly said, we're supposed to do the right thing by town. Speaking of analytical, every single one of you come from jobs, corporate experiences where that is where you were judged and narrated on analytical. You are making decisions based on one survey. One survey that was put out before you educated. We all know to get a proper sense, you have to put a survey out, test, educate, put another survey out. Um, the last thing, I was really happy to see some of our new neighbors on this call. Um, I want to give them hope. There are actually a lot of kids down off the hill and on the hill. So that is great. Welcome to town. Um, I am going to leave and finish my comments with the same thoughts that I did before. I was actually shocked to hear a pretty, um, oh, well, if they can't afford the property or if they haven't bothered to do estate planning because they can't afford a lawyer, they don't even understand what it means, tough. It's not a direct code, but that was the feeling. There is a person who said and is on one of the commissions, let's face it. If you have to offset your income to live here, you don't belong here. That is a massive statement. I don't see. I, I, I wanted to see a little bit more listening, changing, open to ideas. I'm very disappointed that didn't happen tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. I see no one else online. Anyone else in the room?
Eight quick, three one two Hoffman Street. So this is my first full meeting. Uh, I appreciate the time to be able to come and listen and observe. And it's only a year that we've lived in Sagatuck. It's a year on August fourth. Um, but I am a little afraid. I do get a little bit of the sense that maybe we bought a house we can't afford. Maybe we shouldn't have assumed we could rent it, but I don't think that's right. I feel like the community is made up of a lot of people that either and the people on the hill, many of them own other houses beyond their home on the hill or own other businesses off the hill or in some way um benefit from the tourist community in which they live. And I want to live in this house and I want to be able to enjoy the community. And, and I don't, and I kind of hope the rules don't change. I almost feel like all of this talk of the STR has been so negative for the community. I'd love for it to just go away and to find a way to be better, have better guests in our community and be better neighbors to each other in our community. Um, as I said, I've only been here a year. I've gotten to know many people on the hill and have dinner with many of them often almost every other week and every week in some cases. And I think that's what builds community. I don't think rules or legislation does a great job at building community. I think it's awareness and communication, whether it's a short term rental guest or a full time guest. Many of the people on the hill leave for the winter. I know that because I was here almost all winter. So I just feel like we could probably do this better without litigation and without changes in legislation and rulings, but rather more mindfully interact. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Mark Klungle, seven forty-seven Water. Um, just a couple issues. It's, it's, it's disappointing uh that we don't care about people's inheritance and how they can pass it on. I, I'm, you know, what happens if somebody gets married? They can't put their name on there or they'll lose certificate. Um, if somebody has changes in their life where they have to go to an LLC for estate planning, you lose your certificate. Uh, i- it's just not a good consideration of what this whole process is. Um, you know, this is not a, a corporate thing. These are people who ninety-five percent of them I know fairly well, that these are people who buy homes. They want to be here. They can't afford it or they have jobs elsewhere. They want to be here, but when they're not here, they want to rent it. We don't, we've only had one person in our history in the last thirty-five years of doing vacation rentals that never stayed in their home. That was Bobby Gong. We managed her home. She never stayed in it. It was just for rental. That's the only home we had in the thirty-five years that wasn't somebody who basically lived here and rented it when they weren't, couldn't. So you, you're, you're building a case where this, this isn't, but you know, I wouldn't say Bobby's a corporate mogul. It isn't a corporate thing, but she's the only one we ever had that never stayed in our home. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Seeing no one else, we will close out the second public, well, our third public comment for the evening and move on to commissioner comments. I will start on this side this time. Bobby, do you have anything?
Um, yes. Um, and it's a small point, but um it was actually Bob's property and not mine. So uh I just wanted to point that out, but you were right. Um. And for those of you who have attended meetings and uh whether it be planning commission meetings or um council meetings where I've spoken about short term rentals. Um, I'm sorry that I shared my personal experience tonight, but I have been uh clear for the past eighteen months to twenty-four months that uh basically um density is an issue regardless of the R one district we're looking at. And we needed to take action in order to address that issue. So that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Bobby. Ann?
I will just uh try to end on a positive note um after uh after the meeting, at the, at the end of the meeting, um and just say I, I just really appreciate the tremendous work that I think staff has put into this, the coordination with city council. Um, I think it's been, this has been a tricky one because we're, we're not the policy. You know, we are to some degree, but we're not the ones making the, the quick, uh, the big picture decisions here. So um, you know, acting in coordination with the policy decisions made by city council, they know it's been a ton of work to do. So I think that was um really impressive. And um I, I personally think everyone on this planning commission um has acted in the best, what they believe is the best interest of the town, um and the city that we all love. So um, thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Take care.
Thank you, Ann.
Uh, so yes, adding my thanks to Ann's. Um, so to Russ's point, I, I'm going to talk about what a, a neighbor is to me. Uh, so I have a, a German shepherd and everyone in my neighborhood knows my German shepherd because I walk her every day. Um, and several months ago, Facebook posted a missing German shepherd near where I live. And all of my neighbors, Mr. Gardner's uh wife, Jen Reese, uh Patty Becken, who I'd never met in person, but lives on Campbell Road near me. Uh, Gary Medler, who's on the phone, reached out to another neighbor, all saying, is, is your dog loose? And that's what neighbors do. And I live with four short term rentals on my, my little cul-de-sac. They don't know, I mean, you know, they don't know who my dog is. They don't know how to reach me. And um, and to me, that's what neighborhood is. Um, and, and that's what neighbors are. And that's when I ran for office. What people told me they wanted me to advocate for. And that's what I'm doing. And I believe it's really important. And um, so anyway, if you see a German shepherd running loose on Campbell Road, it's probably not my dog, but if it is, let me know.
Mark?
I believe it was Chris Peters who brought up the point about the waterfront development district and the, and the I don't know if it's a loophole or, or an error regarding first floor residential. And I, I would like to, if somebody would mention it to her, um, or for everybody else's certification, Chair Mans was aware of that. He and I had a phone call. Uh, it was his interest uh or thought to put it on tonight's agenda. And I said uh that because of all the stuff going on tonight uh and also the potential for lack of notice of it being on the agenda, putting something like that on the agenda on the fly. I suggested that we hold off and pick it up next month. Um, I don't know of anybody clamoring to buy Coral Gables or Mermaid and put up a three story condo building with first floor residential. I talked to a city council member today as a matter of fact, and, and, and he's not aware of it either. So I think we have a little bit of time. It is a valid concern. Uh, and we are looking at it and we are aware of it. So uh, uh, I think it will be addressed and I appreciate the chair uh being on top of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, I agree with that. The intent was to ensure that the boardwalk is safe, so I think we'll get that fixed up.
Yes.
Um, feedback. So I've asked previous meetings, I'm going to ask again. We've now had the ordinances in place that the STR group put out. Um, looking for some feedback. How successful has it been? I saw that in the previous city council meeting, they had five instances of noise. I just, do, do we have a benchmark? Do we know if we've been successful and with those ordinances and whether, how are we presenting that to planning if no, you know, self like for me, that to the public, for everyone to get that feedback. I heard this FOIA request and I'm sure there's some, there's something in between those two things. So that's one. Two, um, matrix. I know you've been doing two duties, two jobs, and I really miss your matrix of stuff. And I'm looking forward to the new guy coming back so that we can uh see what's going on. So I'm hoping that we see that again by the next meeting.
Well, perhaps next meeting, yeah. Um, we'll work to get Luke up to speed. So yeah, I mean, there's a few different layers there. There's yeah, the, the normal planning and zoning uh, you know, spreadsheet that, that I was doing will, will have, uh, you know, Luke pick that back up and that will have, you know, generally uh the different enforcement cases that, that we're working on. Um, you know, people ask us for a lot of information all the time and there's certain reports that we have to create and depending on what they're asking for, that takes further research. So uh, you know, it's not that we're trying to hide anything. We're more than happy to provide what we need to. There's a reason why there is a Freedom of Information Act process um that allows us, depending on the nature of the request, to recoup some of those costs. And so um, you know, we're happy to, to be as, you know, provide whatever we need to. Um, I, I, I don't, you know, no concerns there. So uh, as it relates to, you know, the short term rental process, so um the short term rental enforcement plan that the city council approved, you know, we're implementing it. So we're, we're working with uh our consulting planner, David Drosick and his uh code enforcement um, uh staff member. Um, and they're using Granicus and we're identifying short term rentals that are not licensed and we're taking enforcement action and then reaching out to those folks. Uh, we're identifying folks that have applied for a short term rental license during the application process and they've started renting before they actually had the license in hand and we're, we're taking care of those issues. Uh, we've had signage issues come up. Um, we've had, um, you know, folks complain about, you know, garbage cans being left out and those sorts of things. We're addressing those on a regular basis. So.
You know, that, uh, so my, I'm anecdotal. If to me, I think, you know, I think we've had a pretty good year. I don't, I haven't seen a ton of it in when I've done my little ride around, but you'll have all the data and that's what I was want to share that I think anecdotally, we've had a good summer, but I only know what my two eyes have seen.
Very good.
You mean a good summer and re, like in what respect?
Well, it's, and in twenty twenty-three, we had this many noise complaints from STRs and twenty twenty-four, we had so our trash complaints, this many, and now we've done this. Are we saying we've been successful with those and that they were good things that we did?
Yeah. So I guess our, our enforcement numbers, yeah, some of we, we log every code enforcement complaint. The sheriff's department takes care of the, the noise related complaints. Um, the one eight hundred number isn't up and, and running yet. So we don't have that data. It's something that they're, they're building out. Um, so uh, you know, that's a process. Uh, so certainly next summer we'll have that, you know, fully implemented and, and we'll have data from that uh as well as we start to publicize that and, and hopefully folks are kind of handling things through that process or from neighbor to, to agent directly or something along those lines. So similar to like we do, you know, each year at the end of the year, we will have a, a annual report that'll kind of compare where how many enforcement cases we had this year by type and we can compare them to how many we've had this year. And I think we're trending overall um higher. Um, it's not just short term rentals. I mean, there's other enforcement related cases that we have, but we have had any more enforcement cases so far this year.
Okay. Will, will the short term rental cases be parsed out of that? Will be able to identify whether that's part of the problem or not?
Yeah, we do have a short term rental uh code that we use for those particular cases of.
The recent report had noise and it had five and it didn't, they weren't parsed out of where they were, where a previous report had parsed them out that of the eighteen three were short term rentals or not. That kind of information will be available?
I'm not sure what noise report you're talking about with five. So I'm, but our code enforcement cases. So if you have a code enforcement case, which is it's unlicensed, they're not following the rule, whatever the case may be, and it's, it's coming to the code enforcement officer, um, then yes, we have that and we can, you know, parse that out and they can, you know. If you want to see the, the details on every complaint and FOIA that information, we can get you that too. So um it's there. I assure you.
Okay.
And we're happy to provide that, that data. So, but I'll tell you, I mean, there are a, a, quite a few. Um, well, I guess quite a few is probably relative, but a number of unlicensed rentals that, that we have been able to actually bring into compliance through this Granicus process too. So.
Great. Well, in closing out, I thank all of you who participated tonight. Those are still in the room, those who have left. Um, as you know, we live in an amazing community. I mean, every guy's downtown today, you got rain happening, you got this great sidewalk sale, merchants are out, the town was full. Driving into town tonight, one of the hardest parts of coming into town was trying to find a place to park on, you know, on a Thursday evening. Um, we had, you know, unfortunate accident occurred, you know, with a truck that went into the water. Uh, hopefully the driver, I, last I heard was still in the hospital, was doing well, but we had citizens and, you know, fishermen that were out there just, you know, jumped in, you know, what a great, you know, horrible experience, but what a great uh thing to have heroes like that that were willing to risk their own lives. And I'm very thankful for that. I also just want to commend, you know, everything from the task force to the city staff, to the planning commission and even council. Um, obviously we have some disagreements on how we view, you know, our uh community and whether we should have a type of limits, but I know that every person like who has, has spoken here and who, to all the people who spoke in the public comment section really do have not only their own view, but what they believe is best also. And so I think that we want to kind of recognize the fact that we, there's a great appreciation for all of that. Um, we also, I would encourage everyone to, you know, we've got a very small staff in, in the city. And it's very challenging to try to say when and you should have notices and when you shouldn't have notices. You know, one of the things that works very well is for the people who have signed up with the email. You know, to me, you know, if I had a short term rental or if I just lived in the community, I should have my email on the blast email that goes out because it gives you the notification of what meetings are taking place. It gives you the agendas. It gives you the ability to kind of see it. And so if you currently know anyone who's not on that, please have them do it because that is the most efficient way for us to be able to communicate how, you know, as a city. Uh, to the point that Mark and CJ and I did reach out to several on the commission this week uh that Chris had talked to me about the importance of the waterfront. We understand how important that was. That's why we did the whole waterfront preservation district over the last year and a half. And there may be one little place in there where there would be potential for the, that to be at risk and it will be addressed. We did decide, or I decided that we would put it on the September agenda. Um, so I'd have time to talk with more with council as well as Ryan and the new zoning person, Luke coming in. But that is something that we are aware of and we understand the importance of that. Um, and then lastly, you know, in regards to tonight's vote, I know that it's been recommended, the ordinance to go over to council. We saw council's vote uh previously as to kind of how it failed. I would just ask for any of the council members, I know Russ in the room, anybody who's still online or is watching this to, to listen to a lot of the comments that came in tonight, you know, and just ask whether or not they're comfortable with the language that's there. There's nothing wrong with them. To, to listen to a lot of the comments that came in tonight, you know, and just ask whether or not they're comfortable with the language that's there. There's nothing wrong with them. Saying, hey, let's take another look at it. You know, but I know that from planning, that's what we recommend it. And now we'll just kind of wait and see what council thinks. And for anyone who. Would, you know, like to do that, you'll have an opportunity when it goes before council to once again speak with them. With that, I will conclude my comments and again to say thank you to everyone. And I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All of us in favor?
Yes.